Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. I would like to call the April 16, 2024 City Council Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Go-to webinar transcripts of the council meeting are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download the services such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the phone numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov, or in person in the main auditorium in the South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comment to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If there, if anyone received, they will be noted for the record, and when we get to the public comment period, this meeting, this meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are giving your permission to be retell, to be recorded, and by participating, you're giving your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 AM and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 PM, and archived for viewing at the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov. And we will now proceed to the pledge of allegiance and then invocation then by roll call. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Tai, and then please remain standing for the invocation by Kenton Seh of the Children's Ministry Director at Gateway Friends Church.
Let's say the pledge of allegiance to the greatest flag on earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice first.
Thank you so much. Please remain standing.
Good evening, council members and Diamond Bar city officials and residents of Diamond Bar. I'd just like to thank you all for opening, for the honor of opening tonight's meeting by invoking God's blessing. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the opportunity to come before you and sit at your feet in prayer. God, you are the Creator of the universe, Lord of lords, King of kings, and the Almighty God, and so we ask for your blessing upon this meeting. Gracious Father, may you grant each council member wisdom and discernment tonight and every day as they lead the city of Diamond Bar. We ask that you guide them in their planning and decision-making for Diamond Bar. I ask that you give them ears to hear and eyes to see the needs of the community and that they would walk in truth and love. We also ask that you grant each council member a discerning heart and mind to see and act in a manner that is pleasing in your sight. If there is any anxiety or stress in any of the council members, I ask, Father, that you give them peace and clarity of mind as well as a calm and quieted heart. Lord Jesus, we thank you that you have sustained their health and continue to sustain them. We pray that you would continue to protect the families of each council member from illness and disease, and may every member of each council member's family grow in deeper appreciation and love for each other. Lord, please bless their marriages, children, and extended family on this day. Heavenly Father, we also ask that you would be with every child in the city of Diamond Bar. As the school year quickly comes to an end, we ask that you bless them with the knowledge and understanding that they need to finish the school year well, open and strengthen their minds to grasp all the content they are learning, and free them of the anxieties and pressures of school. We thank you for every teacher who has committed to our, to guiding our children through education and learning. Bless them in all that they do for the children and give them strength and endurance to also finish the school year well. We also pray and ask for continued protection for all EMS and healthcare workers, law enforcement, and public employees, and residents of Diamond Bar. So, Lord Jesus, we turn to you now and surrender tonight's agenda and the future of Diamond Bar to you. We entrust you, trust into your hands, each council member, the remainder of this meeting, and each person present, whether in person or virtually. Be gracious to us, Heavenly Father, and lead us in your truth, righteousness, and love tonight and every day moving forward. We thank you, God, that you are a God who hears our prayers and loves us beyond what we can imagine, know, or feel. Be with us now. We pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you so much. Now, please be seated. City Clerk Santana, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
I'm here.
Councilmember Lo is absent. Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Here.
Mayor Lu?
Here. Thank you. And next we'll have the approval of the agenda. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor and Council, we do have one minor change this evening. We'd like to add a, an additional special presentation from Congresswoman Linda Sanchez. So, item 1.3 has been added to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Exciting. So, next we will have the, our special presentation, certificate and proclamation. This evening, we will be having a proclamation for Water Awareness Month proclamation, and followed by a special recognition to the Baylor family, and also a special presentation by Congresswoman Linda Sanchez's office to the city of Diamond Bar. If my colleagues can, can help me with, let's go over to, onto the floor. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, for, to hear the accept for Water Awareness Month proclamation, we have Ms. Teresa Lee from the Walnut Valley Water District, and you are the president of Board of Directors. So, we have our Water Awareness Month proclamation, whereas water is the fundamental lifeline sustaining ecosystems and communities essential for agriculture, industry, and human consumption alike. And whereas the ongoing cycle of droughts and escalating impact of climate change underscores the urgent need for concerted, concerted sustainable actions in managing California's water resources, and whereas fostering a culture of water consciousness and sustainability is paramount to addressing the challenges posed by water scarcity and ensuring the resilience of our ecosystem and communities, and whereas the comprehensive water conservation efforts must be underpinned by robust education initiatives that empower individuals and communities with the knowledge to, and tools needed to make informed decisions about water usage. And whereas as stewards of water resources, it is incumbent upon the district to collaborate with stakeholders and communities leaders in promoting responsible water management practices, and whereas during the month of May, City of Diamond Bar and Walnut Valley Water District partners with water agencies, water advocates, and community leaders as stewards for, of sustainable water use to educate and ensure all Californians have the resources and tools they need to use water wisely. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Diamond Bar does hereby proclaim May 2024 as Water Awareness Month and encourages local community members, students, and customers to adopt a sustainable water lifestyle and now and for the future. And my colleagues with, any comments? All right, Mayor Pro Tem Tang.
Disclaimer, Teresa is my wife, my better half, but I usually, well, say this to her, you are the best, you're doing a good job. Okay. But today, in, in the city hall, in front of public, and as a representative from the city, I'm going, and Teresa as the president of the water board, congratulate them, the entire board member for their excellent job in serving our community to providing water supply and education to our community. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, let's now hear from a water expert, Ms. Teresa Lee.
Sure, thank you. I feel so flattered today, and thank you so much, and it's really a great honor to be here, and especially knowing that the city is fully supporting the water district in our effort to educate our community in water conservation. And especially the city is also joining us in our effort to provide that little Earth Day event over at AQMD. Last year, we actually had the event separately. So, the sheriff had something going on, the city had something going on at the AQMD, and the water district was actually working on something, promoting our water conservation. But this year, we're going to have a water event at AQMD, and thanks to the city of supporting us, and we are going to make a blast. It will be great. And what happened is that, again, water is such a precious resource. We're being hammered every day, water conservation, water conservation, so we're going to have a really good, fun event at AQMD, and please join us, and, you know, bring a friend, bring your family, and we're going to have lots of activity, activities, and also to promote, to make sure that, make that water saving, water conservation a way of life. And thank you so much, and thank you for the certificate. I'll definitely bring it back home. And also, one really important thing is that thanks to the city of putting me on the first item on the agenda, so I get to go home and start cooking. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. President of the Board, Ms. Teresa Lee, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you so much for accepting the city's proclamation. Thank you, thank you so much. Walnut Valley Water District. Okay, next, we have the great honors of inviting the Baylor family up here for a very special recognition. Hello, hello, welcome. So, this is the Baylor family, ladies and gentlemen, and this came about was a gentleman by the name of Mr. Walter Vidal, and he came to me one day, and he said, you know, I keep on seeing this one group of individuals that on Diamond Bar Boulevard and around, around Diamond Bar High School, around Evergreen, that goes every single Sunday. I see them every, every single Monday, Sunday morning about, while going to church, and they're going out to pick up my trash. And then one day, I think Mr. Walter Vidal finally stopped and asked you, and then the information he gave me was, yeah, one of the kids goes to Sheparaoe, and one of the kids go to Evergreen. So, we started asking and, and talking, and then, and then he mentioned there was a kid named Kai and Jay, and I was like, one of another parent that said, hey, we kind of know somebody that, two kids named Kai and Jay, and then we started asking around, and that, that, so we found it was the Baylor family that goes every, every Sunday. Mr. Walter Vidal says that for at least six months, I think you believe seeing you for a year, every, every single Sunday morning, like about eight o'clock and maybe about to 9:30. And then Mayor Pro Tem Tang to share with me that she may have seen you this past Sunday or something, right? It's, that made me have a Mayor Pro Tang.
I was driving on Sunday morning, and I saw a group of people picking up the trash on the street. It looks like a family. I passed by quickly, I didn't see you guys clearly, but I believe that's you, your family. Okay? Thank you very much for your contribution to our community.
Okay, so, thank, thank you so much. It is way great. Would, do you have something to share with us, and how, what is it, what's your motivation in doing this?
Okay, yeah, thank you. I'll do the talking, but both, basically, it's going to be giving credit. My beautiful wife Katie is the one that organizes these events and brings people into them, and my two wonderful sons, Jay and Kai, they're doing the trash pickup, and they're doing a great service for the community. And just want to, we just want to say thank you for recognizing our work, and we really appreciate it. Sometimes people will drive by, honk and shout out, "Thank you," and that's really gives us the best feeling in the world, so really appreciate it.
Very nice. Thank you so much. In recognition to Kai, Jay, David, and Katie, that are, on behalf of the City of Diamond Bar, Diamond Bar City Council, pleased to recognize your family, Kai, Jay, and, and David and Katie, that we extend our heartfelt commendation to you for your admirable commitment to enhancing the cleanliness of Diamond Bar. Your dedication to walking around the neighborhood consistently on Sundays and picking up trash does not go unnoticed. Such consistent efforts embody the true spirit of community service and environmental stewardship. Thank you for being exemplar, exemplary Diamond Bar citizen and inspire others with your good deeds. Your contributions are truly invaluable. Thank you so much. Kai and Jay, and then we'll have, for, this is for Katie, and this is for David.
The first time is two bags, each kid, 10 kids.
Oh, my gosh.
The first day, yeah.
That's incredible.
And actually, like, most of the kids, middle school kids.
Yeah.
And for, for Evergreen, just him. The first day, like, you know, the, the car was placed, they had most trash, every single time, all the trash. And Sunday we start 8:30 to 10:30, two hours every Sunday.
Right, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. One more time, all right? So, every morning from 10:00 AM to, every Sunday, every Sunday from 8:30 to 10:30 AM. Thank you, thank you. All right, up next, we would like to invite Congresswoman Linda Sanchez's office, Ms. Melanie Renteria, up here. Hello.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, good evening. So, the Congresswoman was not able to make it to the city's 35th birthday celebration, but she did want to still send her birthday wishes from the House floor, so I have a little video to play of the Congresswoman on the House floor.
Public Safety Services, Diamond Bar is a wonderful place for families to live and to work. I'm very proud to represent Diamond Bar as part of California's 38th congressional district. I wish a happy birthday to the city of Diamond Bar. Mr. Speaker, I rise today to Mr. Speaker, I rise today to recognize the 35th anniversary of the city of Diamond Bar. Founded in 1989, Diamond Bar is celebrating 35 years of cityhood this April. Like many Southern California communities, Diamond Bar's recorded history started with the Mexican land grant for ranching, this one covering Brea Canyon and the eastern Walnut Valley. The Diamond Bar Ranch area eventually developed into a planned residential community. More than 50,000 of my constituents now call Diamond Bar home. This San Gabriel Valley city set against the mountain backdrop offers so much to its residents and visitors. From beautiful parks like Summit Ridge, a wonderful public library, top-rated school districts, and public safety services, Diamond Bar is a wonderful place for families to live and to work. I'm very proud to represent Diamond Bar as part of California's 38th congressional district. I wish a happy birthday to the city of Diamond Bar.
And then here is the proclamation, it's the congressional record, it's the speech that she gave on the House floor, but we wanted to give it to you, so it's like kind of a certificate, but it's directly from her.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Congresswoman Linda Sanchez. Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And ladies and gentlemen, I would like to also acknowledge Mr. Ed Hilton from the Walnut Valley Water District is with us. Thank you so much for coming. And now we'll move on to City Manager Report and Recommendation. City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
No additional reports this evening.
Thank you so much, and we will move on to public comment. Public comment is a time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matter of interest, not on the agenda, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your opinions pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion or, and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted speaker cards first, and then City Clerk Santana will ask those callers joining on the teleconference who may wish to speak on the public comments. I have received three cards, and the first card, it is from Ms. Cynthia Yu of the Diamond Bar Library. Ms. Cynthia Yu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and city staff, the person of the audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Do you want to get the latest eBooks, audiobooks, or digital magazine to enjoy on your tablet, computer, or smartphone? Come in this Thursday at 1:00 PM and learn how to download them for free with your library card. This program is for adults. Food is the language of love in these years. Read together Diamond Bar adult book selection, Crying in H.M. Learn about Korean food when you join us on Saturday, April 20th at 2:00 PM for a Korean cooking demonstration with Sammy Yum of our local fusion to anyone's sushi and roll restaurant. This program is for adults and sponsored by the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library. Joining us on Wednesday, April 24th at 4:00 PM for an afternoon of hands-on learning and fun to celebrate our day. We will provide an assortment of activities for kids to enjoy and learn about the importance of trees in our community and our life. Each child in attendance will also get a select, a book to take home courtesy of the library. On Monday, May 6th at 4:00 PM, join us for a fun afternoon with Cheryl Rindes and her wonders of wildlife, featuring a variety of live animals, from savannas of Africa to the tropical regions of South America. featuring a variety of live animals, from savannas of Africa to the tropical regions of South America. This program is for ages five to twelve, with parents or caregiver, and sponsored by the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library. Please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org, for more program information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cynthia Yu. And next, we have Ms. Rachel Kirk of the Friends of the Diamond Bar Library.
Yes, my name is Rachel Kirk. Good evening, city council members and mayor.
Good evening, my name is Connie Jiang.
And we're going to double down on the Read Together Diamond Bar that Cynthia Yu mentioned as our librarian. Diamond Bar, Read Together Diamond Bar is sponsored by the Friends of the Library. It's a yearly event where a book is chosen that we encourage the community to read. Our librarians, children's librarian, young author, and teen librarians choose corresponding books for our young people to read along with Read Together Diamond Bar. And I'm inviting you and our community to attend our culminating event, which is on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two o'clock to three thirty, right across the street in the Windmill Room. And this is the book that we will be featuring this Saturday. We have the author, she's the author of the children's book selection this year called Stand Up, Yumi Chung. And she will come and speak about her book and her writing process, which is a very interesting thing. I would really encourage you to bring the children and the young people who are interested in writing books to come and learn about her process and what motivates her and the skills she uses to write. And there'll be a question and answer period, it'll be a very informative event. The other part is a very emotional, to me, event. And this is when we present the winners of the How a Book Changed My Life essay contest, also sponsored by the Friends of Diamond Bar Library. And the American Association of University Women helps to read the book, the essays, and select the finalists. Three students, ages thirteen through eighteen, will receive a $300 Amazon gift card, and their essays will be shared with the audience. They're always very touching, and these are young people who share their emotions and their struggles growing up, or the insights that they have develops through reading a book that has resonated with them. And it touches all of our hearts. We encourage you to come, and it'd be a very worthwhile event. Also, there'll be snacks, of course. So, we'd like to show you the book again. Welcome, everybody, again, it's Saturday, April twenty-seventh, in the Windmill Room of the library from two to three thirty. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we certainly hope to see you all in there. It sounds like it's a lot of fun, and it's very educational. And next, we have Mr. Alan Wilson. It's Alan Wilson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Alan Wilson, and I just want to ask the city council, let me make a little commentary. For the last couple of weeks, there's been agitators who had been shutting down our commerce and our freeway system. Yesterday, there were agitators that shut down the Golden Gate Bridge. There were agitators that shut down the Sea-Tac Airport. There were agitators that were shutting down the O'Hare Airport and the JFK Airport. And we had one a couple of weeks ago downtown LA. And I just hope that those agitators does not shut down our streets and our freeway system on the 5760 freeway. If that happens, I hope the CHP wrestles people because they have no right to disrupt commerce. And what bothers me is that you can have the agitators say all you want, but there is a time and a place to do it. Last week, in a town, I've lived in Diamond Bar for twenty-seven years, and I'm very proud to live in this wonderful city where we can have political discourse to agree to disagree. But there is a town two thousand two hundred and fifty-five miles away in Dearborn, Michigan. There is a town where somebody was chanting "Death to America." Really? "Death to America"? This is a country that founded on the basis of freedom, who fought against the British Empire. A British Empire that had colonial powers, and we beat the British Empire not once, but twice. We're a nation that was divided on the crux of the Civil War. Abraham Lincoln was asked whether God is on the side of the North to the South. He said, "It's not the question, the question is whether we are on his side." Franco Delano wrote about, knew the economic calamity of the Great Depression, that the only thing we have to fear is fear itself. President John Kennedy said, "Ask what your country could do for you, but what you could do for your country." President Ronald Reagan stared at the balloon wall and told Mr. Gorbachev, "Tear down this wall." And we had a little-known state senator from Illinois spoke at the convention and said, "This is not the red state of America, this is not a blue state of America, this is the United States of America." And before anybody to say "Death to America," it blows my mind at the nation of immigrants, and I am a family of immigrants from generations ago. And I hate to say this, but if people keep chanting "Death to America," blocking our commerce and so forth, you know what, I'm really set up, and I'm saying, if you don't like this country, there is a way out. You can always find your way to get out. I don't know the patience of anybody who could tolerate agitators. And it just, it really screamed anger at me. And I just hope that we could get a sense of unity and understand what's the greatness of this country. We are not a perfect country, we are striving to form a more perfect union. We freed the slaves, we given the women the right to vote, we gave people with disabilities an equal asset to housing and transportation. So, back to my question, is that I hope that the Sheriff's Department, the CHP, has a plan. God forbid, if the agitators disrupt our freeway system. We know the 5760 freeway is a link, it's, as I know, the eighth largest congested freeway system in the United States. So, for anybody who keep chanting in that town of Dearborn, Michigan, I feel sorry for you. But you don't know the history. I'm a student of history, and I study history every day as much as I can, and I tell pride to my country, and maybe we all too. And I always appreciate local government, and in the Brown House, we have elected officials who take the heat from the residents, who sit there, listen to us, bemoan and so forth. I had a conversation with Councilman Steve Tai, and he reminded me that this is the only forum where you can make your point. You can't make a point at the state legislature, you can't make a point at Congress. So, I just hope that those think twice before they even chant "Death to America." Again, there's always the one-way ticket out of here, and you're free to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alan Wilson. And that's all the speaker cards I have at this point. And City Clerk Santana, were there any public comment emails received?
Thank you, Mayor. There were no emails submitted for public comment. If any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program now. And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. So, are there anyone else in the audience that would like, wish to make a public comment or address the city council? So, seeing none, we will close public comment. And we will move on to the schedule of future events and our consent calendar. Mr. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events and then proceed to the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the scheduled events, there will be an Arbor Day tree planting ceremony tomorrow morning at nine AM at Larkstone Park. There will also be a free catalytic converter etching event tomorrow from nine to eleven AM at Calvary Chapel on Golden Springs. Join us this Saturday, April twentieth, for our Earth Day celebration from nine AM to two PM, right here in the AQMD parking lot. The Planning Commission meeting for April twenty-third has been canceled. There will be a public safety seminar held on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, from six to seven thirty PM at South Point Middle School. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May seventh, starting at six thirty PM here in the AQMD auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of your April second regular meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated March twenty-seventh through April ninth, approval of the treasure statement for March, adoption of Resolution 2024-12, approving updates to the California Environmental Quality Act vehicle miles traveled significant threshold, adoption of Resolution 2024-13, authorizing the continued participation in year four of the LA County Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program, including a determination that this action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and adoption of a proclamation declaring April twenty-sixth as Arbor Day. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And would any of my colleagues like to pull anything, any items from the consent calendar?
I want to pull item five point four. I have some questions. The California Environmental Quality Act Vehicle Miles Travel Significant Threshold Update. So, shall we discuss this, or shall we pull on the list?
We'll pull five point four, and
I'll make a motion for approval for the remaining items on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Chow, and a second by Councilmember Tai. City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo is absent. Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes. Thank you so much. And Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Okay, item five point four is regarding the vehicle miles traveled when considering the development. Now, since our city is going to have our town center in the future, then we will have a significant increase of housing there with a higher density there. So, will this, will this kind of regulation affect the development plan there? That's my question.
I believe it will have a positive impact for us. We are still doing an environmental impact report for the town center plan, but the idea that the higher density encourages people to travel less, more services within walking distance, that definitely is a step in the right direction. We do have our consultant from Farr and Pierce on the line. Nope, they are not. Alright. I don't know if that helps, we could follow up with you as well for some of those as we get into the town center discussions in the, you know, in the coming months.
Thank you.
With that being said, may I do a motion?
I'd like to motion to approve item five point four on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Tang, and then a second from Councilmember Tai. City Clerk Santana?
Chow.
That's right, sorry.
Because it looks so similar.
Okay, Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo is absent. Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes. Thank you. There are no public hearings this evening, and we will move on to council consideration item number seven point one. City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Public Works Manager, Hal Gaffari, will be making the staff presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Fox. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. The item before you, tonight is Heritage Park and Community Center renovation project design concept and First Amendment to the Consultant Services Agreement. This is for our CIP number FB24502. In October, the city council approved a consulting services agreement for the design of our Heritage Park Community Center. And that process started right away, and we went through the process. We prepared the first set of design concepts for the community center floor plan, for the shaded structure, and the park and playground. And as part of that process, the city council reviewed those design concepts that were provided and provided feedback to those concepts. The floor plan that was provided and was selected by the city council to move forward with was the plan that provide a larger footprint and provide more functionality to the building for the community. And the shaded structure that was selected back then was, we had two options for the shaded structure, and the one that was inspired by the city's Windmill theme was selected. For the park, we had two options that the city council picked a combination or proposed to combine the two options, and also had some comments on some of the components of the park. We'll get to that, those details. And for the playground, we had two options that neither of those options were, seemed to be, the city council seemed to be interested in them. So, this is the floor plan that was selected. One of the comments that we received on this floor plan was that we need to look into expanding the community room or the main room of the facility. And the design team looked into that option as well. But before we go, get to that, get to that discussion, I'm going to just give a brief review of what this option is going to provide to the community. On top of the existing building that will be upgraded, and at least twelve hundred square feet of it is going to be totally renovated and totally rebuilt, it's going to add another twelve hundred square feet to the floor plan, to the footprint of the building. It's a fifty-five percent upgrade to this building. It's going to provide a new shaded structure in the front and back and rear of the building. It's going to provide new entrances space. It's going to expand and upgrade the kitchen, the catering kitchen that exists, and add a new storage area to the kitchen, specific to that part of the facility. It's going to give the residents a new or second office that can also be used as an activity room. It's going to add new indoor restroom to the facility. It's going to remove the existing restroom, it's not in a really usable shape, so that's going to be turned into a storage area, and a new indoor restroom is going to be built. It's going to expand the activity room that currently exists by relocating the restroom in that activity room to the, next to the new outdoor restroom that's going to be built. But the new restroom for toddlers is going to be accessible from inside the building. And it's going to relocate and rebuild outdoor restroom of the park. That's a very old restroom, that's going to be, we are going to remove that, eliminate that from the facility and build a brand-new one attached to the building, but accessible from outside only. And it's going to also convert existing indoor, as I said, converting existing indoor restroom to storage. And it's going to provide new indoor/outdoor access to the community room. That was one of the requests that the city council had. We have an existing facility or existing accessibility from the community room to the patio. That is going to be complemented with a new one on the west That is going to be complemented with a new one on the west side of the, west wall of that room. And that's going to be a window area with two new doors that's going to provide access to the patio in the back. Regarding the request to explore options to make the community room larger, the design team looked into it and that turned out to be cost prohibitive because we, if we wanted to do that, because of the shape and the structure system of the building, we basically had to rebuild the foundation, rebuild the walls, and rebuild the roof system. So that's, the cost would, would be at a level that probably would make sense to rebuild the entire facility. That's why that, we didn't really include that in the plan. So these are the elevations of the design that we have now. As you can see, you can see the, the windowed area and the two doors on the back of the building. And also in the west elevation, you can see the new door and new window system that's being added to the facility. That's going to make it, first of all, it's going to add more light to the community room and also it's going to make access to the patio in the back better so that if there is an event and there is a need to use both spaces, the users of the space can have access to this area. And that back patio is going to be shaded. It's going to have a shaded structure on top of it, which doesn't exist right now, and it adds to the usable area of the building for events. And also in the south elevation, you can see how the new shaded structure in front of the building is going to be. That's, that's the one that is inspired by the shape of our windmill in Diamond Bar. These are renderings of the building, front and rear. So the next item that we are going to look at is the park itself. As you remember, we have two options, as I mentioned, for the park, but now the City Council liked the option that has, the, the turn, the, the shape of the, total design and concept follows the, basically the shape of the building. And, but there were some comments about the picnic area and how we can make, we can have a better use of the picnic area and, and the baseball court, basketball court. So this is the change that happened. In the past, what you see on the left side is how the design was last time that we presented to the council. And on the right side, your right hand, you'll see the after design, the design that we have right now. This is what we are presenting on this one, in this final park design that we have right now. So as you can see, the picnic area is totally changed. The orientation of the basketball court is changed so that we are using, we are, have a much better use of the space in that design. The next item or next component of the project that we are going to look at is the playground concept. We had two playground concepts, as I mentioned, and neither of them was, were selected. So the design team came up with two more options for the council's consideration. This is playground concept number three. This is more of a modern, minimalistic design. And as you can see in the design item, there are elements or there are components that children can use and enjoy, but it's more of a, more of a, more design, more a modern design. And the color theme that is selected is to give the children a more calm feeling. And I can, I can show you the other, the items that are included and we can go through the play equipment that has been included in the design, if there is an interest. So these are the, this is the playground concept number three. Playground concept number four, this one is, even though it's still a design, a clean and modern design, but at the same time, it has, it looks into tradition, little bit more, more strongly includes the traditional concept and what this diamond bar is about, back, back, going back to the ranch that it was and horse, basically equestrian ranch that it was. It has items that are related to the ranch and also it is, even though, again, even though it's more design, more modern design, it still has the traditional items. You can, you can take a look at some of the pictures. It, and as you can see, it has more equipment included. And has that tractor item that I'm pretty sure is going to be very interesting. At least my kid would have loved it. We can go back and design these items, look at these items. But the next slide is about contract amendment and construction costs. Design contract amendment that was initially awarded to the consultant was focused on turning the concept that was prepared in two thousand nineteen into construction plans. But when the team looked at the design, we realized that we can improve that concept by adding some other items, including the shaded structure that was added to the front of the building and also adding twelve hundred square feet to the building. And because of that, that the cost of the design, the scope of work of the design grew and as a result, the cost of the design went up. That's why we had, the original contract was for three hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. This new additional components of the design adds about one hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars to the scope of work and the total, not to exceed, that is proposed is for four hundred eighty thousand dollars. We have about five hundred, we have five hundred thousand dollars in our CIP budget for this project, for this design work, and we are still within the budget. And that twenty thousand dollars that remain is going to be, is proposed to be a contingency on this project. Probable construction cost of the project, we gave the council a general idea about the cost of this, to build this facility, the way it's being proposed. At this time, the probable cost is about fifteen million dollars to build everything, including this community building, the, the park and playground and shaded structures. Out of that fifteen million dollars, over ten million dollars of it is the building itself and the rest of it is the rest of the components, park and playground. And that's, obviously, that's the number that we are at, the level of the design that we are right now. When the design is finalized, it is very likely that the number is going to change, not necessarily going up, but it is, there is a possibility it goes up. And also, the actual design construction, actual construction cost is going to be finalized when we actually go into constructing, we go through bidding process and we have a contract. Even during the contract, also, the, the cost can change because we are going to have change orders, but that's going to be very, it's going to be minimal compared to the whole cost. But just to give the council a general idea about the costs of this construction work, it's going to be about fifteen million dollars, the way it is right now. We can go to questions and discussions, and after that, we are going to have the recommendations, recommendation for the City Council's consideration.
Okay, thank you. And now we will go to public comments first. And is there anyone in attendance that would like to make a public comment on this item? It's seven point one for Heritage Park. Singnan and City Clerk Santana, were there any emails or anyone online?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Four emails were received from Cynthia de la Rosa, Lydia Mulligan, Tricia Tran, and Adrian Cotrell. Those emails were forwarded to the City Council and placed at the entrance of this meeting for public viewing. If any members of the public joining this teleconference would like to comment on item seven point one, please click on the raised hand icon in your GoToWebinar program now. And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. And is there anyone else, once again, in audience? Singnan, we will now close public comment and will now turn over to our colleagues questions and comments for discussion. Okay, we'll start with the Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. I love how serious our consultants all look. You guys are like very serious looking right now. No, this is great, thank you for coming back to us with two additional designs to, to consider. I know we had a study session on the first two designs, but I love the ones that you have presented here with us. I think they're, they're more in line with kind of what we're, we had in our head. So essentially, you guys read our minds. So I had an opportunity to share the designs with some of our community members, and there were some comments in addition to the public comments I provided. So I thought I would share that with you. So in addition to what we're thinking about, I want to kind of share kind of preliminary what our residents are thinking about. So I, I know this is just a preliminary design, but one of the concerns that they, they're looking for more shade over the playground, and also they're asking, some of them were asking for, is there an opportunity? I mean, by design, it looks like it was designed for kids. More, I would say, five to eleven, twelve, somewhere around, I don't know. But, but there were, some residents were asking if it's possible to include some features for our older residents, maybe some exercise equipment or, or some sort of walking pathway that our older residents can also enjoy. So those were the two comments that came up, but I think overall, the designs are much more in line with what we had in mind. But I thought I would share the, the comments from our residents.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Tai.
Mr. Gafari?
Yes.
Or, or Mr. Fox, I don't know whoever wants to answer. When we looked at this before, we were talking about we weren't interested in the tractor. And I thought we were headed for option three. Did I miss something?
I believe the option four, that is before the council tonight, is more of a ranch theme. You may recall, the previous one was more of a, a western town. That was a little bit more Hollywood, you know, stage set type of presence. So I think this is a little bit closer to kind of our city roots, is more of a ranch theme. I, I think in talking with our staff, the, the tractor is going to be a very, very popular item. Certainly, there's others that we could, you know, elements that we could look at if, if there is that direction.
All right, thank you. I've been wrong before, so if it's, if it's a good item, it's a good item. It just, it seems out of place to me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. And I happen to have a question on the cost of additional scope of work. My question is, when we first reviewed the, a design, particularly the, the playground, it was, the theme of it, it was quite a bit of a miss in what we had imagined and what Diamond Bar would be. Does that incorporate the additional cost that is that a refactor in for reiteration of the second design that we have to pay extra for the design, or is that included?
Mr. Mayor, the additional design cost is not related to providing more options for the playground. Additional design is related to adding to the scope of work in, in the, mostly in the building. The building is a larger building now, it has a, it has more shaded structures and it's not even comparable with what was in the concept that was prepared to, in two thousand nineteen. That's the extra work.
Thank you so much for that clarification. And then one other question I have is on the trees. I noticed that there's different sizes of trees. Right now, we do have different sizes and quite a bit of pine trees. And the, the trees, from looking up at Tom and Bert's eye view, it, as Councilmember Chow has mentioned, that it provides different types of shade. How do we determine what tree to put on there? And are, are there different types of trees because of the, the coverage area? Do they represent, what I'm trying to say, the different trees that had the circles, coverage area? Do they represent different trees, different types of trees?
Usually, that's the case. There are trees that will remain on the site. If you look at the, if you see the design, and there are trees that are going to be added. And those added trees, obviously, depending on the design, they are going to be different kind of trees, yes.
Do we?
Not all of them are going to be the same, obviously, yeah.
Okay, do, do we get an information on what type of trees that will be on there?
At this stage of the design, we don't, I'm pretty sure the design team does have the trees in mind and it's usually going to be in line with what we have in other places in the, in the, in other parks in our city, something that works for this facility as well. But we don't have a tree, tree list right now, ready to present.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, no? Okay, so any more question, one more, another question for Councilmember Tai.
So, one of the folks that sent in, Ms. Cotrell sent in, I think, is a very good idea. I think Councilman Chow brought it up about exercise apparatus for seniors and adults. And if I'm not mistaken, doesn't Diamond Canyon Park have some implements that you could use to walk around the area and, and utilize the, the exercise equipment? And how difficult would that be? Because it doesn't have to be where the kids' playground is. It can be from one end of the sidewalk to another end of the sidewalk and get the exercise that they're looking for and utilize those implements.
Yes, Councilmember Tai, yes, Diamond Canyon, Canyon Park does have that facility, that, that walking area. But this facility also, with the current design, is going to have illuminated or split walkways that are ADA compliant after construction is completed, that can be used by senior citizens. And that's one of the amenities that is being provided to the residents, senior, senior residents. And also, this building in its current shape is currently being used mostly by senior residents. So this upgrade is going to happen, basically adding to the functionality of the building, adding to what is available to senior residents. On top of that, right now, we are looking only at the phase one and two of this whole facility. If you remember from two thousand nineteen design, there is a phase three to this facility that we are not designing right now as part of this project. But as part of that, the phase of the project, there are going to be exercise equipment and pickleball courts and other, depending on the feedback that we get during that design and when we are working on that phase of the project, we will have other amenities for the senior residents.
I, I'd like to ask the follow-up on that. So what if we want, let's say, the community feels and/or the research that feels that we having a senior exercise facility would be beneficial for our community? When we mentioned, let's say, phase three, by us looking at it right now, I, I've been to that park many times, there is no other space for a playground. So if we built the kids' playground existing right now, the other space of it, there is the basketball court and there is where, where the building is, and then there's the lawn area, which is part of the, the base, the softball or baseball field. So realistically, later on, we say we want the phase three, we want to add some structures on there, I don't know how realistic that would be because the way it's drawn right now with all the walkways and unless we use part of the lawn and the grass area and then turn that into a, a structure.
Mr. Mayor, when we are talking about phase three, we are not going to be touching this area that we are designing phase one and phase two right now. So yes, in this area that we are, we are working on, on it right now, there is no space to add other equipment unless we eliminate something else, some of the components. But for the phase three, that large area that we see, can we see the slide? The large area that we are looking at, depending on the demand or the need of the community, we should be able to add more, we, we, at that time, I mean, first of all, based on the feedback that, that we received in the past when the two thousand nineteen work was being done, there were some discussions and some feedback, some comments of what do, what are we going to do with that ball field? So it's not, it is very likely that, based on the request that we receive from the community, that's not going to remain the way it is right now. It's going to be, it's going to have more components to it. And at that point, we will know exactly what's the high demand. And at that point, we will know exactly what's the high-demand type of amenities that we want to put in there, and that will define what goes there. Just to give you an example, probably 10 years ago, no one would have asked for a pickleball court. But now, everyone wants it. We don't know what's going to be, what's going to go there, what's going to the request be five years, 10 years from now. So based on the time that we are designing that part of the facility, we will put whatever the community wants there.
2019 is predate my times. Was there a research that says people do not think that that whole grass area, the baseball field, that green large area, have a chance of changing to what it is now? People do not want the way it is with the green grass and the softball field and baseball field?
Yeah, I'm just like you. I was, I came here in 2020. So I'm going to ask our Park and Rec director to provide feedback on the feedback that they got from the community.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, in 2019, a lot of the feedback we received for that potential phase included a variety of options. There was definitely interest in baseball and softball. There was interest in pickleball in 2019, walkable paths, a ninja park horse was popular for those that were in attendance, as well as exercise equipment. It's a large space. It's one of the few spaces we have that's flat and lit, so there's opportunities, you know, throughout the evening. So yes, it is five years ago, but a lot of those interests, we still see in other parks now, but there was no, you know, consensus at that time. But definitely some interest in a variety of active recreation opportunities.
The reason I ask is because majority of the parks in Diamond Bar, we have a good balance of the green space and the playground and the building. That kind of is a little bit counterproductive and intuitive to what every part that is in Diamond Bar, if we were to convert that green area into structures. I could be wrong, I'm just saying.
I actually don't remember people ask, I remember people wanting to keep the baseball field. That's what I remember, but I think there were some other options that were brought up. But I wouldn't say that there was a lot of people or anybody that can remember asked us to take away the baseball field. I don't remember hearing, I could be wrong, but.
Right. So assuming if we would, if we go with the discussion of Phase Three, if we would add a senior exercise area that is building structures on that green field, or we convert that into pickleball court, right? So it needs to take space on there.
Mayor, if I can add to that, I don't think, well, based on my understanding of the comments I received today, I don't think they're asking for a facility, a structure. I think they're asking for those things that where you can just get on.
Right, that's what I mean by structure.
I don't think they're asking for, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's still a neat place, right?
Yeah, I think it was more equipment versus structure.
Yeah, so that's what I mean. Thank you for clarifying. So I guess my question is, if, if the residents, the community, want to build something, add a couple of more exercise machines onto where the playground and the other areas is now, how does that work?
Well, I think what the one option would be is to have some type of park course or exercise course, as it's referred to, and you have those individual pieces of equipment really along the existing, you know, along the sidewalk. So it's really kind of just a little pop-out, almost like a park bench, so to speak. It's just a little station spaced out around, around the loop. It doesn't take up much green space. It's not really going to alter the functionality of the field area to, you know, any degree. That would be what I think would be appropriate for the Phase Three, if and when we look at the redoing the ball field in some, whatever that ends up being. The idea of having a children's play area for a two- to five-year-old, age-specific, and then a five- to 11-year-old, age-specific, that's pretty standard in the recreation world. We have our consultants that can speak a little bit more to that. I would be a little bit cautious about intermixing senior exercise equipment within those designated play areas. We have, all of the other improvements that we're making are senior-oriented, the improvements to, you know, the community room, the improvements to the ADA paths of travel, the restrooms, the patio area, and the walking paths themselves is exercise that they could certainly, you know, take advantage of. Nothing's going to prevent them from sitting on a piece of equipment or, you know, playing with their grandkids on the swings, but I think we may want to try to still keep it kind of separated for those age-appropriate activities. But if anybody, if Hal or any of our design team has any other information they'd like to share.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with you, Mr. Fox, that if you go to the tracks in Brea, there, however far it is that you're walking, you have that equipment off to one side or the other. It's not taking up space from a ball field or from the kids' playground. And the same is true in Fullerton, at Craig Park, or a number of places that you see. I think Ms. Cotrell referred to Kaiser in Baldwin Park. And so it's easy, it's doable, and I think that it would be integrated, and maybe not even in the third phase, maybe now, but you guys know better. So, you know, you've got that plan, and I think we've, we've chosen wisely, and these would, again, be good amenities to, for folks. I don't, I get that we're improving the facility, and it's used largely by the senior community, but I don't think that should stop us from doing stuff for the outdoors people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. I agree.
Mayor, I just want to add and agree. I think, if possible, and you guys are the experts, I think, given the amount of usage of that facility by our senior clubs, I think it would be helpful if we have something outside for them, you know, just more activities for our seniors, if possible. I mean, you guys are the experts, but if not, then it's not. But if it's possible, I'd love to see something, some equipments for our seniors, if possible.
That would be, would be part of what the design on this face, not so much in the other space.
We'll be happy to take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, so any more discussion? Sing none.
Is there a concurrence on playground theme options three or four?
Are we taking a vote, or how are we doing this?
Do we, yeah.
Thinking, kind of, you know, straw vote, consensus, one or the other, so, you know, so we can get some direction, not, you know, that we can then move forward with the next step in the design process.
Okay, so, okay, well, let, I.
I already told you how I feel about the tractor, but I like the way that number four looks.
I like number four as well, and I am not sure about the tractor. But if statistically, tractor is, I can share that, you know, when we go to other parks and with this tractor, our kids always climb on the tractor. This incident is for some reason, I am not sure, but statistically said, and that is what a community wants, and yes. Option four.
Number four, number four. Yeah, I still like, I like concept four. I just feel like it goes better with the main building, the look and feel just matches a little bit better. I think number three is a little too modern for that space. So I also like option four. And I'm actually okay with the tractor, as long as it doesn't get hot. So it's not any metal, you know, it doesn't get hot during summer.
Just for the record, he has the youngest kid, so maybe he knows something.
And then was the council comfortable with the revisions to the site plan with the realigned picnic area and basketball court? I'm seeing heads nod.
Yes.
Yes.
And then was the council comfortable with the addition of the additional windows on, I think it was the west side of the elevations with the additional door and window system?
For me, yes, again.
Yes.
All right, very good. Well, I think that was very helpful. And then it would be appropriate to make a motion on item B regarding the contract amendment.
So do you want? A motion for B and C, or you want separately?
Yes, B and C, thank you.
Do you want them separately? Okay, I would make a motion to approve item 7.1, B and C.
Okay, so we have a motion, Councilmember Tai, on item 7.1, B and C.
Second.
And then we have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Tang. And City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo is absent. Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes, thank you so much. And we will move on to council, subcommittee reports and meeting attendants, and also comments. And we will start with Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our design team, our staff, for the presentation. I think every time a new project comes online, we take a lot of time to discuss, because these are facilities that will benefit our community for generations to come. And that's why we're investing in our future, and that's why we spend a lot of time talking about it. So thank you to our staff and our design team for the park. It's very exciting. So hopefully, we'll see that come to fruition at some point. I am going up to Sacramento again this week for the League of California State Board meeting, and there are a couple of agenda items that will be up for discussion, and some of it will impact our ability to assess city services and other things. So I'll report back once I come back and share what the board has decided to, what actions decided to do. So with that, I'll say thank you and good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow, for representing our city and our county. And Councilmember Tai.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Mayor. You did something that we had talked about before. You found somebody doing something wonderful in Diamond Bar. They weren't asked, they just go out there, you know, when you think about the Badler family and the example that they're setting, not only for their own kids, but the kids that they've incorporated into this, it's just terrific to acknowledge them. And I think you could tell they were pretty excited about it, so congratulations. Very, very exciting. On Saturday, the golf course will be open. People have asked me repeatedly, when will the golf course be open? And at first, it was in August, and then it was in September. And so finally, I asked them each time that when a date was specified, a month was specified, I asked if they had asked what year it would be. So it looks like it's going to happen. April 20th, this Saturday, 2024, it will be open for business. Some of us won't be allowed back in there because of what we did to the old golf course, but it should be a lot of fun. I think it's going to be state-of-the-art, and it'll be wonderful to see so many people utilize it. So the 35th anniversary was an incredible success, a resounding success. I had, I brought this up to our city manager, I had reservations about Summit Ridge versus Pantera, and based on the turnout, I guess I was wrong again. I'm never, never hesitant to say when I was wrong, but it was a great layout, it was tremendous turnout, too. And I always, I always apologize before I get started, that when I mention a few people, I feel bad that I didn't mention everybody involved. And that day and days like that are for Parks and Recreation people. They are out, and they are out in full force, and it was Andy and Jessica taking care of the flat area, I guess I would call it, where the stand was. Ryan Jones is up at the, at the top, and he's helping with parking. Ryan Wright, on the other hand, is running around like an expectant father. So he is there to oversee it. It was terrific, it's a great team. I know that, that we've said before, Diamond Bar has a great team. I think it starts at the top, and it was just terrific that, how you put all that together, how much time that took, and how much effort, it was a terrific job. So great, great job by all of everybody. Please give our grateful thanks to them for getting the job done. With that, I'll say good night, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai, and Mayor Pro Tem Tang.
I was absent from the 35th anniversary, but I'm glad that it went very well, that well-attended. And of course, I will thank our Park and Recreation Department for all the efforts, echoing Councilmember Steve Tai's attitude toward them, being very thankful for them to organize everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Tang. And yeah, I'd like to thank our staff for today's presentation, and Mr. Gafari, and also the design team, and thank coming back so quickly with something that we can use. Thank you so much. And the 35th birthday celebration was amazing, and we're still, the community's still talking about it, and how amazing of a job our staff has done. And big, big shout-out to Parks and Rec and Mr. Ryan Wright, and making it so exciting, and combine that with the 20th anniversary of Diamond Bar Center. And our volunteers and staff and the DB4 Youth and everyone in the community and expect, including our elected officials from dot com, and join us for the celebration. Thank you so much. And tomorrow, as, tomorrow, as our city manager Fox, Mr. Fox mentioned earlier, we will have a healthy Diamond Bar toddler playtime and our tree planting ceremony at the Luxon Park tomorrow. Plenty of fun, kids playing, and then to add another tree to our city. That's very exciting. I would invite everyone to be there at 9:00, I believe. And then also, as Councilmember Tai mentioned earlier, the long-awaited golf course grant opening, it is this Saturday. And it's 9:00, it is the ceremony, and then 10:00 is the tea time. And there's fun and craft and all that for the whole family. And if that's enough, then we have plenty of other things to do in the city. Right after that, in here, in there, in the QMD parking lot, it is, we're celebrating Earth Day. So Earth Day, combining with Walnut Valley's water district. And it is an exciting time. Our family has, our kids especially, like coming to the event, because they learn so much, and a lot of it is fun and playing. They're learning while playing, because with crafts and different hands-on activities. And this is a great event, and we can invite them and the community and everyone to come join us. And so with that, I will say good night. Thank you so much, and we will call this meeting adjourned at 7:56 PM. Thank you so much.